Good evening, sorry about the technical delays. We have a question here, we have the senior pastor of Latin which is John Randy. Pastor will be leading us in the locker tonight. Please join me standing in the locker. Thank you Pastor.
Thank you for inviting me, I may be here. I ran across this prayer, you may have heard it a bunch of times from Detroit, Washington. In seventeen eighty-one, and I just hope that will be remembered tonight. I now make it my earnest prayer that God would have the United States in his holy protection. That he would incline the hearts of the citizens to cultivate the spirit of support nature in obedience to government and to entertain a brotherly affection and love for one another, for their fellow citizens of the United States at large, and particularly for those brothers who have served in the field, and finally that he would most graciously be pleased to dispose us all to do justice, to love mercy, to demean ourselves with that charity and humility and specific temper of mind with further characteristics of divine author of our blessed religion. And without any humble imitation of those example in these things, we can, and without a humble imitation of those whose example in these things, we can never hope to be a happy nation. Pray our supplication will be succinct through Jesus Christ our own.
Thank you Pastor. Please continue standing, standing for the prayer definition.
I point to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, please be, please be seated. Now, we call to order the regular town council meeting of town of Sunnyvale for Monday, July twenty-five, twenty-two. For the record, we have all council members except Mr. Finch are present, with the six of the seven members present, we are called. Now time is seven forty, and the meeting is in session. We have a couple of introductions, number one, this one introduction, Austin Guthrie, Parks Maintenance Commission, JD, good evening sir.
Rachel.
JD, could I have just one quick moment? Mayor, if I could make a quick announcement just for the audience at home, our swag, our video cameras are not functional right now, the audio is functional, so if people are tuning in through the website, they can hear the meeting, and I believe we are Facebook live-ing the video, so we're using the Facebook Live to provide the video portion, so just in case anyone is listening at home right now, they'll hear the audio but not see the video, but they can go to Facebook to see that.
Got it.
So thank you for your.
All right, good evening everyone, my name is John Doubt, I am Parks and Social Director of the town of Sunnyvale. I am here this evening to introduce our newest field maintenance tech, Austin Guthrie. Austin, I think this about him on, he's calm, sure in fact, we already count on him on the day-to-day aspect of what we do, the biggest thing that Austin brings to our team is he has a great attitude, okay, he's willing to learn, so please help me welcome Austin to the team.
Austin, your ticket picked, have you been there, it's okay.
Yeah.
You've got a top job to do.
But, hold this real quick.
Congratulations.
I'm gonna go.
Let's go, boy.
Right here.
He's just.
All right, next we have a couple of recognitions. Community Emergency Response Team is a, is a group, which I'm affiliated with, I have taken training with them, I know Mr. Egan, I might sort of take a training, and they've been a big part of this town, right since inception, when Chief Kendrick worked with Mike Ross, so at this time, I want to recognize the SERC for their continued support to the town of Sunnyvale, and for the volunteer services during the twenty-twenty-two Sunnyfest event, chief.
Appreciate it Mayor and Council, tonight it's, it's pretty much to recognize our SERC team, the folks work hard, and if some of the community doesn't really see who's those guys in the lime green shirt, well, that's, that's the SERC team that we're able to, to call upon during emergencies as it is, the Citizens Emergency Response Team. So, tonight I would like to, had to, had to prove to get Mike over here tonight, and wanted to present him with an appreciation plaque of, of his, his work, just getting the team up and running and having it available for us, which means also attending, helping us with the Sunnyfest, they did an outstanding job, they were doing anything from traffic, helping the police department out with traffic, barricading, lost, lost folks if we had any of those, so they're, they're a good contributing factor to, to the town in case we do have emergencies and things like that, so this time I'd like to introduce y'all to Mike Ross, if you have it, Mike, if you come up here please. The certificate reads as, East Texas Regional SERC for their continuing support to the town of Sunnyvale, and for their volunteer service during the twenty-twenty-two Sunnyfest event. Like, we really appreciate it.
Thanks Mayor. Thank you.
The next one is the recognition of the Public Works Department for their hard work and dedication during the recent water main breaks. This, this is a group of outstanding folks, led by Brian, Creed, and the group, these guys work so, so hard, every, unfortunately, every, every, every week I drive around, I'll see, these guys are working hard outside the hardware, so it's a great opportunity to recognize the team, thanks for being here, Brian on the team. Brian, you want to say something, sir?
Yeah, I just said, oh, Mayor, these guys do work very hard, and offense is a thankless job, and we certainly appreciate when we get the opportunity to, to give these guys gratitude, and, and I welcome it, and I hope they know I might as well.
Mr. Mayor, you want to say something?
Yeah, Mayor, thank you, I would, and I'd like to include Brian, our Public Works Director, in, in, in the recognition with the entire crew, because of the recent water, waterline breaks, I believe it was two weeks ago, three weeks ago now, each one of these individuals and, under Brian's leadership, and including Brian, these gentlemen, each one of them were out there from about six AM until, I mean, I think it was after five, by the time they all cleaned up and went home, with no breaks, non-stop, and I believe the temperature that day was a hundred and five degrees if I'm correct, so it goes without saying what a thankless job that they have, but we're, we're proud that we could bring them here tonight, so they could be recognized for their hard work. I'm sad to report, it's not likely that that'll be their last water main break, but let's knock on wood, and hopefully it is because of the dry conditions and the, and the lack of moisture, but these are the, these are the men and women who are keeping this town up and running in the, in the wee hours of the morning and late into the night, so thank you Brian and team, appreciate all, all that you've done.
I appreciate the certificate, certificate of excellence, the Sunnyvale, town of Sunnyvale, here, I recognize the Public Works Department for their hard work, dedication, and attention to the multiple water main break that occurred on July twenty-two, twenty-two. To surprise.
It's okay. I don't mind. Yeah, we shouldn't.
Yeah, that was special, I enjoyed it. Okay, this is the time for announcements, acknowledgement pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section five fifty-one dot oh four one five, the mayor, council, the staff, the report, on various items, so council, this is the time for thanks and appreciation. Again, one other group I want to organize, the Corps Enforcement. They never get the credit, right, they're always the, don't take it the wrong way, they always bear the badness, right, they are the ones who say, you know, something's wrong, but, but I, I think they just do a great job, and unbelievable work, I'm just going to say that, but that, that there. Council, any other announcement? Mr. Mayor, do you have any comments, sir?
No report, Mayor.
Any other staff, any comments? All right, moving on from the announcements, moving on to the public comments, this is the time, members of the audience may come forward and speak to the council, only any items other than personal matters or legal matters or items on the agenda? We have a Zoom connection, Rachel, Zoom, do you have a Zoom? Okay, all right, so if anyone from the audience would like to come forward and speak to the council, you may do so at this time. Now it is coming forwards, so I'm going to cross the public comments. Moving on to consent agenda item, we have item number seven, eight, nine, and nine, ten, eleven, council, I'm going to remove item number ten, eleven, from the consent agenda that leaves seven, eight, and nine, would anyone like to remove any other items, seven or eight, seven, eight, or nine from the consent agenda? Okay, if not, can I have a motion to approve consent agenda item seven, eight, and nine?
Motion to approve consent agenda item seven, eight, and nine, second.
Motion made by Mr. Freeman, second by Allen, to approve consent agenda item seven, eight, and nine, all in favor, signify, all opposed, motion passed, six, or Mr. Finch is absent. So council, since I requested removal of ten, eleven from the consent agenda, let me start there, right, so, so basically, and I hope, this is about phase three of the Stony Creek development, and the developer is asking for, to escrow of funding, at a hundred and ten percent of the estimate, for, for their landscape and hardscape improvement at a later time, so I, I wanted to have a discussion on this, the council discussion. The reason is, I want to be absolutely certain, we all know about the escalating cost of labor and material, everything, I, I just want to hear from staff that the escrow amount is sufficient to protect our interest, town's interest, I want a proper landscaping and hardscape done, and I want to make sure that the funding is sufficient, with that, that's really the reason I, I am not against this agenda, I just want to have a discussion on this one, with that, I'm going to turn to Mr. Town Manager for any comments, so for me, ten, eleven, can I go to, so just kind of, Mr. Town Manager, sir?
Yes, sir, Mayor and Council, item ten and eleven are related, one is an escrow agreement and one is a development and facilities agreement, they both have to do with landscaping and hardscape improvements that are required for what is called Phase Three B of the Stony Creek development. Our current ordinance allows for an escrow and development agreement, excuse me, an escrow and facilities and development agreement to be approved by council to allow certain projects to be accomplished at a later date, and before the, to allow the final plat to be released. Essentially, the Stony Creek developer is ready to, they've received their final inspection on all of the flat work, the roads and the utilities that are in, so they are ready to turn the lots over to the builders so that the home building process and the sales process can begin. Part of the site plan required them to complete the trail and the landscaping associated with this project, but our ordinance does allow the council to consider an agreement, and this was done last year on a different phase, whereby the, the developer will agree to put the total amount of the project budget in an escrow plus ten percent contingency to guarantee that the work gets completed as, as it was required by the site plan, so that is the request tonight of the development company for Stony Creek, to go ahead and escrow these funds for this purpose, and the total dollar amount for the project is two hundred and thirty-three thousand and eight dollars and seventy-eight cents, plus an additional ten percent contingency, and that is the dollar amount that's reflected in the development and, and facilities agreement as well as the escrow agreement. The project in question tonight is actually underway, out there in Phase Three B, so I drive by the project a few times a week, and you can see, you can see workers down in the trees, working on the trail, and, and then certainly the landscaping elements would be put in when the temperature is much more conducive for new landscaping, but the developer does have a closing date and is ready to turn over the lots to the home builders, so these two agreements if approved tonight would effectively allow the developer to go forward and, and transfer those lots to the builders while still agreeing, and they'll continue to oversee the project as, as ongoing as we speak. I've been told by the developer as of today, they're on schedule to complete the work within sixty days, but between now and then, if the council approves both of these agreements, the two hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars will be set aside in the escrow agreement, and they would request a drawdown of funds periodically as this project continues on, so I, I think initially there were some concerns that the ten percent contingency may not be enough, but given the short timeframe that we believe this project will be, will be completed, I do believe, at staff's recommendation, I do believe that this does protect the town's interest. If it were a duration projected longer than sixty days, I think the, you know, the town would be wise to require a larger, a larger contingency, and if that's something you want to consider in the future, for an ordinance change, staff would be more than happy to pursue that, to give you the, the ability to require a much larger contingency in the future, so I believe last year, Phase Four, I believe it was Four, Four B, was essentially completed the exact same way with the development and facilities agreement as well as an escrow agreement, that project was completed by the developer with their own funds that were in escrow, and the town didn't have to provide any money towards that. Lastly, I will just say this, that the developer still has additional phases in Stony Creek, so I do believe that, I think the developer's interest is in the right place, and will, will complete the project as, as desired, so this just allows them by ordinance to go ahead and transfer the lots while that project work is still ongoing, so with that, Mayor, I also have, since the previous Phase Four was completed prior to my coming here to, to Sunnyvale, certainly I can, we can call on our town engineer to address any questions for the experience that, that we had last year with this project.
Counsel, I talked with Jeff, I just told him that I'm going to put the site terms to the consent agenda, and we'll have a discussion, so Jeff provided a lot of answers to the questions I have, so I'm, I'm overall happy, but Jeff, let me ask you one question for the record, right?
Yes, sir.
So, and you said, the developer already started working on the landscape and hardscape. Do, do you know whether they have a agreed-upon contract with the, the crew for the set price, or, or that is, or that is still, in other words, is there any cost risk, or is the cost risk is mitigated?
So, my understanding, Mayor, is there is a contract with the, with the landscape company that is out there working right now, what you have is an attachment in the exhibit is a, is the cost of the project, but not the actual contract, and, and so, we don't, we don't have that material at this time, but clearly they're out there working, and I, I trust the developer that they wouldn't work without a contract, so like any other subcontractor contractor relationship, so what you have in your packet though is the actual cost breakdown of the project, and, and it is ongoing. Right now, what you'll see out there is the trail work that's being done, and so there's a lot of trees and the pathway that's being connected, the gazebo is built or nearly completed, and then the trail work is ongoing right now, the landscaping would be the last thing to be put in, and again, because of the temperature and then the irrigation has to be put in first, they don't want to put in the materials right now and then it die, and they just have to replace it, so, you know, it was just a matter of timing with the closing and the issuing of the lots, and again, our ordinance does allow for that, but to answer your question, Mayor, no, we don't have an actual copy of the contract between the subcontractor and the developer, but.
Do you believe they have?
But I'm, but I'm assured by the developer they have one, and he is also the one who provided assurance as of today, that they believe, they're, they're confident that the work will be done within sixty days from today.
Counsel, Jeff, Mr. Manager answered almost all my questions, so I don't have any other questions, I just want to open up for council questions and discussion, does anybody have any comments or questions on this item?
Mr. Cox?
So, I know there's several, several Stony Creek phases going on right now, this is the one by the big ponds, the big watering hole?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay, and then there's a gazebo back, and I think there's roads already mapped out, or they actually paved or made, put in everything?
Yes, sir, that's correct, we, we've had the walkthrough of the subdivision recently, there were just a few minor routine, hundreds of items, nothing out of the ordinary for a project of this type that's being addressed as we speak, and we do expect to do a final acceptance of the flat work in the very near future, I would think, in the next week or two at most.
Okay, and you said this developer is building another phase, which, which is the other, the other phase they're working on?
The same developer is currently engaged in the construction of Stony Creek Phase Four C, which is the phase, it's, it's kind of the furthest east phase, like Four B is the phase where homes are currently under construction, and Four C is to the east of that, that project is also well underway, it's, it's not as far along as Three B is, but I, I would expect that we would be looking at, you know, trying to move toward a final walkthrough of that phase, probably within the next two months or so, would be my estimate.
Okay, and after that, there's only one more phase that's being worked on?
The Phase Five C and Five D, which is on the south side of Nance, that is a different developer, that, that is a different entity than, than who we're working with on this project today. Thanks.
And Mayor, Council, I, I did leave out one important point, which was the Planning and Zoning Commission, Commission approved the final plat, I believe, a week ago, so this is the final step in the process before the developer can release the lot, the lots to the home builders.
Mr. Mayor, do you have any comments, sir?
I just had one question, with them going from phase to phase, and putting some of the landscape on the whole, all the trails still connect, or is there going to be a gap during the development between each phases?
They're intended to connect up eventually, I don't think they've constructed the connection point that goes across like the old railboat, excuse me, the old rails to trails alignment, they're going to have to put that in, they have, that has not been constructed, but eventually you'll have one continuous path that, that goes along the fringe of all three of these phases.
Okay, very good, thank you.
So you said, the rates, that the connection is, is included in this escrow, or that's separate?
It would be included in this, they just haven't constructed that particular item of it yet.
But your anticipation is by September, they will complete that trail, the landscape, including the trail connection?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Yeah, and, and the trail work is ongoing out there, I mean, as I drive by periodically at lunchtime, you can actually see them down in the trees, down below the, the sightline, and you can see them, and I, and I think the, the clearing of that pathway took them a little bit longer, and I believe there was some other infrastructure work that had to be done down there, the gazebo, and it kind of ties in, starts there at the gazebo, and then goes back around the rest of the development, there will be a portion of that trail that I think was designed to be kind of a, a wooden, a wooden trail for a section of it inside there, but yes, that is what they're working on today as we speak.
You're comfortable with that, ten person, or do you, do you want to go up on the person dates?
Mayor, I think given the short duration and the fact that it's already under contract, and they're already underway on this project, I, I feel comfortable that the ten percent should, should protect the town's interest, if it were a longer duration and certainly a much larger dollar amount, I would suggest, if you want to have the ability in the future to require a larger contingency, we would probably need to bring back an ordinance change to do that, but, but given today's prices and inflationary environment, it's certainly a legitimate concern, in this particular case, I don't know that it would be necessary.
Counsel, additional questions or discussions on this topic? Okay, if, I'm sorry, yeah, can we open up for public comments, if there's anyone from the members, the audience would like to come and speak to the council, or item number ten, you may do so at this time. Now it is coming forwards, so I'm going to cross the public comments, council, other additional discussions. Okay, if none, I call for a motion, item number ten.
I make a motion to approve item number ten and eleven, we're going to do it at the same time?
We are going to ten, one at a time.
We do ten, okay, make a motion to pass, number ten as presented.
Motion made by Mr. Allen, second by Mr. Freeman to approve item number ten as presented, all in favor, signify, all opposed, motion passed, six, or Mr. Finch is absent. Counsel, moving on to item number eleven, Mr. Town Manager, do you have any additional comments, Mr. Jenkins, or Mr. Manager, any additional comments on item number eleven? Okay, can we open up for public comments, item number, if anyone from the members, the audience would like to come forward and speak to the council, or item number eleven, you may do so at this time. Now it is coming forwards, so I'm going to cross the public comments, council, are there any questions or discussions on item number eleven? Okay, if there's, if there's none, I call for a motion.
Motion to approve item number eleven as presented.
Motion made by Mr. Freeman to approve, item number eleven as presented, second by Mr. Allen, everyone heard the motion, are there additional discussions? If none, all in favor, signify, all opposed, motion passed, six, or Mr. Finch is absent. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, that's a public hearing item, item number twelve, hold a public hearing, an act upon the twenty-twenty-one conceivable conference report, water quality report, I mean, right, Mr. The Director of Public Works, Mr. Creed, good evening, sir.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, as you most of you know, every year we're required to bring this to public hearing for the, for the residents, it's our water quality report, consumer confidence report, this year, this is what everyone should be able to see, Erica does a great job, and we need, I appreciate all the help she gives me to make this thing more pretty than it would be if it was just a bunch of tables if I did it, the constituents in here are mostly from North Texas, we don't treat water here, so, so typically I don't have a whole lot to say, because we don't do any treatment processes or anything like that, but I'll be happy to answer any, any questions about any of the technical aspects of the reforms.
Mr. Creed, let me take the public comments, if you don't mind.
Yes, sir.
Counsel, let me take a public comments, item number twelve, if there's anyone from the members, the audience would like to come forward and speak to the council, or item number twelve, you may do so at this time. Now it is coming forward from the chamber, so let me cross the public comments, council, are there any questions or discussions, item number twelve? Brian, I have one question.
Yes, sir.
That's okay, I will, I can always get back with you.
Okay.
No problem, sir. Counsel, any additional questions for Mr. Creed? Okay, if none, I call for a motion, item number twelve.
Motion, item twelve, to approve as presented.
Motion made by Mr. Freeman to approve, item number twelve was presented.
Sir.
Second by Mr. Allen. Are there additional discussions? If none, all in favor, signify. If not, all in favor, signify. All opposed, motion passed, six of Mr. Finch is absent. Moving on to discussion, action item number thirteen, discuss and act upon the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twenty, amending chapter four, building regulations of the Sunnyvale Court of Ordinances. Amending article four point oh seven, plumbing code to make formatting changes. And add section three or six point two for plastic sewer and drain waste rent piping installation. Mr. Key, dear you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor and Council. This item that's being brought before you tonight is just to, uh, make some formatting changes that we oversaw and needed to make, uh, in the ordinance itself. And then to add a section in there that was omitted in the last ordinance that we came and presented to you that was approved, uh, several months ago.
Can you explain why there was the formatting change? I just couldn't see.
Yes, sir. The formatting would be the numbers in the article itself, and so we had to take it through legal to get some formatting changes done to make sure that they coincided and they were uh, I guess numerically correct, uh, in the ordinance.
Not content, just the
No content, just just the formatting.
Uh, let me see, three or six point two, I did not read that. Three or six point two four?
Yes, sir.
Is that a new section?
That is a new section that we were adding, yes, sir, that was omitted in the last, in the last ordinance that we presented to you. Uh, this is just to ensure that the piping that is being installed underground is meeting the requirements that, uh, all the cities in North Texas pretty much follow. As far as the compaction and the, uh, granular material that they use, we want to make sure that they're using sand in the bottom of the ditches rather than just throwing the regular dirt on top of the pipe so that it has a good settlement. Uh, so that it doesn't, uh, I guess heave, uh, when the ground expands and contracts.
And this is, this is as per the International Building Code, I think?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yeah, this is under the International Plumbing Code and the Residential Code.
All right, let me take public comments. If there's anyone from the members of the audience who'd like to come forward and speak to the council, like number thirteen, you may do so at this time. Now it is coming forward, so I'm going to cross the public comments, council, any questions or discussions on item number thirteen? If none, I call for a motion.
I make a motion to approve item number thirteen as presented.
Motion made by Mr. Allen, we have a second. And second by Mr. Freeman to approve, item number thirteen as presented. Everyone heard that this motion? Are there additional discussions? If not, all in favor, signify. All opposed, motion, motion passed, six of uh, Mrs. Secretary, I think this would be brought as a, as a concern agenda item. Let's wait, we have for secondary, correct? Again, you have council has the authority to pull it and discuss it if you choose to do so. But typically we bring it as a considered agenda item for the secondary. Moving on to item number fourteen. Discuss and act upon the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twenty-one. Amending chapter four, building regulations on the Sunnyvale Court of Ordinances. Amending article four point oh three, residential code to make formatting changes and add section three or six point two for plastic sewer and drain waste when piping installation.
Yes, Mayor and Council, this, this is pretty much a, a mirror image of the plumbing code, and so a lot of times your residential code and plumbing code coincide with one another. And so we're making the same change in this ordinance so that we can make sure that they mirror each other. And that there are no questions when we have, uh, contractors and builders researching our codes and our ordinances.
So what's the difference between this and the previous ones?
The only difference, uh, Mayor, is one, the, the first one that you approved was in the, uh, International Plumbing Code. This one is for the International Residential Code.
Okay, all right. I did not see that in the, uh, agenda. Okay, cool. Okay, all right. Uh, counsel, are there any discussions? Or questions on this topic? Let me call for public comments. If there's anyone from the members of the audience who'd like to come forward and speak to the council. Or like number fourteen, you may do so at this time. No one is coming forward, so I'm going to cross the public comments. Okay, uh, there are no other discussion. Can I have a motion to approve item number fourteen as presented?
I make a motion to approve item fourteen as presented.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Free, uh, Allen, second by Mr. Freeman to approve item number fourteen as presented. Everyone heard the discussion? Everyone heard the motion? Are there additional discussions? Uh, Mr. Mr. Manager?
Uh, Mayor, after the vote, I just have a very quick comment if I can on these two agenda items, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, if there are no other comments or discussion, I call for a motion, item number fourteen. I am sorry, motion made by Mr. Allen, second by Mr. Freeman. You heard the motion, um. All in favor, signify? All opposed, motion passed, six of Mr. Finch is absent. Mr. Manager?
Uh, Mr. Mayor and Council, I just, uh, you know, sad news. Unfortunately, this will probably be Mr. Key's last presentation before this body. As he has accepted a similar position with the city of DeSoto. Just wanted to say, uh, a thank you, um, from the staff perspective for all the hard work that he's done. I know I've heard many of you echo the same comments. Um, he's, has a great career opportunity ahead of him, and so barring any unforeseen circumstances, this will be his last presentation with the council tonight, so just wanted to give him a quick shout out.
Thank you, Mr. Key. We, uh, we appreciate everything you've done for us. Moving on to item number fifteen. Consider act of the movie Hyatt Simmons as Associate Judge of the Town of Sunnyvale. Mr. Hamsi, good evening.
Mayor and Council, um, on May twenty-sixth of twenty twenty, y'all, uh, voted to appoint Hyatt Simmons as an Associate Judge for the town of Sunnyvale. And that comes from our contract with Seagiville so that he would be an Associate Judge and could arraign our prisoners. Um, it's been brought to staff's attention that he retired as of July the fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. So at this time, we're just asking to remove him as an Associate Judge since he won't be arraigning our prisoners.
Should we expect someone to be back for it or?
Y'all actually appointed the new person two meetings ago.
I got it. I got you. It's a clear, I got it. Yeah, I remember that, yeah. Okay. Okay. Let me open up for public comments. If there's anyone from the members of the audience who'd like to speak to the council, like number fifteen, you may come forward. Now it is coming forward, so I'm going to cross the public comments. Counsel, any questions or discussions, like number fifteen? If none, I call for a motion.
Make a motion?
Go ahead, please.
Make a motion to approve item number fifteen to remove Mr. Simmons, Associate Judge from, uh, Town of Sunnyvale?
We have a motion made by Mr. Carter, we have a second. Second by Mr. Freeman to approve, agenda item fifteen as presented. Everyone heard the motion? Are there additional discussions? All in favor, signify? All opposed, motion passed, six of Mr. Mr. Finch is absent. Item number sixteen, uh, values to presentation of the certified property values from the Dallas Central Appraisal District for the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Ms. Hopton, do, do you have anything else you want to discuss?
No, sir. I was just going to present the certified titles to you.
Yes, ma'am. Please do.
And the, uh, fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three certified property values from the Dallas Central Appraisal District totaled one billion, seven hundred and twenty-four million, five hundred and sixty-two thousand and sixty. That is a twelve point seven four, seven four percent increase from the prior year.
Thank you, Ms. Hoptons. Counsel, any questions or discussions on the certified property values of the Dallas Central Appraisal District? Okay, and then we open up for public comments. If there's anyone from the members of the audience who'd like to speak to the council. Like number sixteen, you may do so at this time. Now it is coming forward, so I'm going to cross the public comments, council, other initial discussions. If I call for, uh, there's no action on this one, like, this is more of a percentage. Thank you, sir. Eric, yes, you can see I'm trying to hurry up. I mean, your hand is holding, you know. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Item number seventeen, uh, discuss the proposed Citizens Police Academy Chief. Good evening, sir.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, as you know, since our inception as a police department three years ago. Uh, branding a citizens' police academy was one of our goals. Um, it was set back several times, mostly from COVID. But here lately, we've, uh, had several employees do a lot of work on this, uh, particularly Corporal Beddingfield. Who had experience in this from, from his previous, uh, department. So, uh, this is just a pack, uh, a packet to show you where we're at, and we're basically ready to go with this. Um, we have a logo, we have a little section on explains what the Citizens Police Academy is and does. And then we have, uh, the, the schedule and the, the topics and the instructors. Uh, we have an ad advertisement, and then we have the application. For people that live or work in Sunnyvale, if they'd like to attend, they fill out the application. We do small background and warrants check on people, obviously, because we don't want anybody that's wanted in the, in the academy. And, um, and then they'll be allowed to attend. This is the inaugural one, and, uh, like I said, we're, we're excited about launching it.
Chief, how do you advertise this one? How do we get people to know that, citizens know that? This is basically for city, Sunnyvale residents only, right?
Residents or people that work in, in town.
Okay.
Um, we're waiting, we wanted to present this to council
Okay.
uh, before we advertise, but we're ready to advertise. We're going to push it out on social media. And, uh, mainly social media and some other forms of advertisement. It's not going to cost anything to, to do that. Um, we did design this, this logo and, uh, so.
It's a really nice logo. So, now, there's no action here. This is more of an information share, right?
That's correct, Mayor. This is a presentation. Uh, I'm sure staff would appreciate any feedback you may have. I think that you see a draft proposal of the program. Uh, it's been pretty well thought out. It mirrors a lot of other programs, uh, in North Texas, and so and I think, Chief, if I'm correct, you're looking at having two classes each year, one in the fall, one in the spring. Is that correct?
That's, that's the initial plan. We can always deviate from it if we need to.
So, but at this point, it's just presentation and feedback.
So it is a two, you talk of two batches, right?
If we have, if we have the need to do two classes a year, we would be able to. Uh, we'll see how the first turnout goes.
So there are multiple, tell you what, let me read through it, I'll get back with you.
Yes, sir.
It's a lot to read. But thank you, Chief, I appreciate it. And I, I certainly ask you to keep us posted, as we make progress before we start. I want to be there in our session, I want to be there.
Yes, sir. It is open to all council members also.
There you go. Come in. Yes, thank you, Chief. Thank you. Mr. Freeman, you have a comment, sir?
Yeah, I want to make one comment because as I saw this, like, some things kind of came to my head, and I wanted just to read this out loud. It says graduates of the Citizens Police Academy are not trained to be police officers or vigilantes. The purpose of the academy is to provide information to attendees to allow them to make informed judgments about the police department. When I saw this, I was like, I don't want anyone coming with this thinking that all of a sudden they're going to be anything more than just an informed citizen.
Correct, and that's, that's
Exactly.
Laid out.
Yeah, that's, that's why I wanted to read that, just so everyone was very well aware of what this was. Thank you.
Mr. Clark?
I'd like to add, um, I'm very excited that you are building this out and we're, we're developing this. This is, uh, this is very exciting. This, uh, there's some great movies in the nineteen eighties about police academy, um, which, uh, uh, I think great is debatable. Anyway, there were, there were some mildly, mildly, uh, successful comedies. But anyway, this is exciting that we're doing this, and I'm really excited. I, I, uh, I know there's going to be a lot of sports, and I'm excited to see this grow. So thank you.
I don't think that was the feedback I was expecting, but I mean, but we getcha. But Chief, thank you, sir. Please. Counsel, any comments? But Chief, I'm looking forward to this one, seriously. And when you came on board, you said this is something you want to do, and I was not sure you'd be able to get it done so quickly, but so thank you for that. Okay. Moving on to, let's see. Item number eighteen, Mayor and Council request for future staff updates and agenda items. Counsel? Okay, nobody's rushing, so I'm going to seal this now. Uh, with that, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
You waited for the last one, you know. Mr. Allen, and second by Allen, do a chair. All in favor, signify? All opposed, motion passed, six of time is seven fifty-seven. And meeting for Monday, July twenty-fifth is adjourned. Thank you, sir, for being here, staff.